Do you rise? For all the sounds of the flag.
When you raise your hands to the flag, the United States of America, and to be the people for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, the great and just as one.
Public service meeting was provided by Westfield Area Union County Local Stores Advertising on January seventh, twenty sixteen. Notification was sent from the library and promptly posted on the municipal bulletin board following the office of municipal report. One of the public at our first according positions of the overfod people in January two thirty-one P M, nineteen seventy-five. And if you want, please, to shut off the library of our kind of devices. Local call. Ms. Arianna.
Mayor Lombardo.
Here.
Councilman Cookrow.
Here.
Councilman Morton.
Here.
Councilman Matthews.
Here.
Councilman Sarno.
Here.
Councilman Disco.
Here.
And Council President Petraselli.
Here.
On the minutes, uh, got motion to accept the minutes that's presented.
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes that's presented, Mayor.
All in favor?
Aye.
Ms. Arianna, please read the order.
New Jersey State League of Municipalities, Mayor's advisory.
Stephen File.
Mister Bruce Patterson, redevelopment.
Stephen File.
Corrie Delisue, authority minutes.
Stephen File.
Borough Gravation Commission Minutes.
Stephen File.
Involved planning board minutes.
Stephen File. Ordinances of public hearing, now ordinance sixteen dash ten and sixteen dash eleven, as advertised on June sixteenth, twenty sixteen. Ms. Arianna, please read the ordinance sixteen dash ten by title only.
Yes, Mayor, ordinance to amend Article, Article one, Establishment, Organization, and Administration in Chapter thirty-four, Police Department, to designate the mayor as the appropriate authority for the police department pursuant to NJSA forty-eight fourteen dash one eighteen, and to amend administrative procedures pertaining to the police department.
Have you seen any correspondence?
No, Mayor.
Does anyone present wish to be heard on ordinance sixteen dash ten? Seeing none, double motion to oppose the public hearing, ordinance sixteen dash ten.
So, Mayor?
Second. Double motion to adopt ordinance sixteen dash ten. I'll make a motion to adopt ordinance sixteen dash ten.
Second.
Discussion? In the non-public area.
Councilman Cookrow. Oh, wait, could I, uh, discussion, I'm sorry.
Sorry.
Try to be a gentleman.
Sorry.
Uh, just real quick, I just want, as I expressed to, uh, Police Commissioner Sarno, uh, this is, uh, with all due respect to you, Mayor, I'm just, I'm a legislator of heart, I really jealously guard our, our prerogative here, and it's nothing to do with you as mayor, I really, I'm gonna be voting against this tonight, um, I just wanna keep, uh, as much authority in the, uh, vested in the council, um, and I do understand that the police commissioner did, uh, research on this, and this is the trend in Union County, the majority of Union County, but, again, like I said, just, uh, as a, as a jealous legislator, I'm gonna be voting against this.
Okay, thank you.
I don't have to speak, I just figured I was gonna vote against it anyway, so I took the words out of my mouth.
Okay.
And that's with all due respect, obviously.
And then, as I dedicated to Councilman Matthew, I feel this is a more efficient way to, uh, go through the police force, and that's what I'm all about, is efficiency in government, and that's why I'll be, I brought forth the, uh, the ordinance with the help of the committee, and that's why we're here.
Thank you, Council. Uh, local, please, Ms. Arianna.
Councilman Cookrow.
No.
Councilman Morton.
Yes.
Councilman Matthews.
No.
Councilman Sarno.
Aye.
Councilman Disco.
Aye.
Council President Petraselli.
Aye.
Ms. Arianna, please read ordinance sixteen dash eleven by title only.
Mr. Mayor, warrant fixing sal- fixing salaries and wages of certain officials and employees of our borough and Union City, Jersey.
Do you have received any correspondence?
No, Mayor.
Does anyone present wish to be heard on concerning ordinance sixteen dash eleven?
Uh, good evening. Attorney General, Councilwoman, three twenty-five, what was it? Just this more for information, questions, um, about the fifth one, one, two, three, four, six one down, chief financial officer slash treasurer slash assistant administrator, uh, minimum seventy-eight thousand dollars, a maximum eighty-eight thousand dollars, is that three people, or is that just one person with three hats?
There's one person.
Yeah, that's, that's their title, at this point?
Yes.
Okay, a lot of hats, a lot of hats. Almost like the private sector. Uh, ca- council, uh, council members and the mayor, minimum zero dollars and maximum two thousand dollars, uh, that I appreciate from the budget cycle, uh, that, you know, this zero shows up, that that was part of the cost savings measures, I appreciate everybody voting and agreeing on that, uh, the maximum range, I think, still stays the same from last year, and I would assume, uh, stipends could easily go up, I guess, next year, might not vote, there could be a vote, okay. The, the second page, uh, fifth one down, uh, part-time cargo municipal office, eight dollars and thirty-eight cents per hour, I haven't been paying attention to minimum wage, but is that what the minimum wage rate is? Eight dollars thirty-eight cents?
I thought it was in the seventies.
Is it seven?
Oh, no, oh, no, it's at least that, it's not here.
It is?
Yeah. I think it's eight thirty-eight, but may have gone, maybe it's eight hundred and seventy-five.
Maybe, maybe, New Jersey, remember, like, because New Jersey. Yes, higher, yeah, well, this would be in Jersey, so I was.
There's no one in that position, it's just on there, it's.
But you're not, you're likely to leave, right?
I think eight thirty-eight is no one.
I think it is too, for New Jersey, yeah, it's a right around the corner, I believe, actual.
Oh, that's right, it's on the wall.
On the wall, by the wall.
That's correct. As I'm being thrown out, I'll take a look. Um, reg- registrar, a couple, registrar of vital statistics, and then, uh, near the bottom, uh, shade tree officer, are, are, uh, four thousand, five thousand, three thousand, five thousand, aren't these stipends, or are these actually salaries, is this a salary ordinance?
They're salaries, they're all salaries.
Are they all salaries, so when they're, when they're added in?
You don't pay forty stipends.
No.
All right, Jim.
Salaries.
Can't get a, uh, can't get a W-two and ten ninety-nine.
Okay, okay, so I, I assume that this money then goes towards the pension credits also that, okay, okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none, double motion to oppose the public hearing, on ordinance sixteen dash eleven.
So, Lou.
Double motion to adopt ordinance sixteen dash eleven.
I'll make a motion to adopt ordinance sixteen dash eleven.
Uh, discussion.
Question, as far as the, um, as far as the, um, how it's, um, the increase, if it starts at a certain amount of money, is it a certain amount of years for the maximum as far as the increase goes, is it broken up per year, how is that gotten?
This is a salary ordinance.
Right.
But you also have a salary resolution on, generally, that sets everyone's individual salary by name and title for the year twenty sixteen, this is just a range.
A guideline.
Yes, this range says that you can pay X position.
To the max, to the maximum amount.
Yeah, yeah, in that range.
Okay.
And if you want to exceed that maximum, then that ordinance gets adjusted, and that's where the highlighted areas were adjusted, the rest, the rest of it didn't need adjustments, and the ranges were the.
Okay, also, on the mayor council stipend, uh, I thought that was, why is there still an amount of money to collect, if this was not, totally not as ordinance, so that it wouldn't probably get any different administration?
Um, a different administration.
I think we have to vote it down, in fact, everyone's elected to take care of it.
Well, that, to answer your question, in the next council, we'll have to raise that money back in the budget, then this ordinance says zero, what, what's the other?
Well, is there any way that that could be not done in the foreseeable future?
It doesn't matter, I mean, what, what, what you're saying is you would want to prevent future councils from doing that.
Correct, for, for, for putting aside that.
But you can't, you can't prevent them from doing that, regardless of what he says, they could just change this too, and now you've already, it's already been, it's already done, so undo it, it's already, since we, you know, on the agenda.
Remand the ordinance.
And the ordinance be amended to, but, I mean.
But then you have, you have to do, I mean.
At this point, it's already passed instructions.
Right, it already went to the newspaper, so you're gonna, it's gonna cost you more money to do something that's not gonna have any impact, any council can change something you did next year, you can't stop that.
I guess I'm just wanting, I guess the question I have is how can it be stopped totally, like, forever in the future, nothing can.
That's correct.
That's a problem.
But, I mean, they would have to raise that money, that's, this piece of paper is the easy part, they would have to impact tariffs, or put that back in there, you took it out of the budget.
Right.
That, I don't, I don't, I don't, I never, I've seen councils take things out, I really haven't, ever seen people that.
Oh, really? You watch National Government, maybe?
I'm watching, I'm talking about this council, I'm talking about this job.
Any further discussion?
I'm talking about this job.
Any further discussion?
Thank you.
Here, non-public, please, Ms. Arianna.
Councilman Cookrow.
No.
Councilman Morton.
Yes.
Councilman Matthews.
Aye.
Councilman Sarno.
Aye.
Councilman Disco.
Aye.
Council President Petraselli.
Aye.
Moving on, Ms. Arianna, please read ordinance sixteen dash twelve by title only.
Yes, Mayor, and bond ordinance to authorize the acquisition of group additional or replacement equipment and machinery, and by and for the Borough of Garwood and County Union State of Jersey to appropriate sum of thirty-eight thousand dollars paid across their loans, to make a down payment, to authorize the issuance of bonds, to finance such appropriation, and to provide for the issuance of bond anticipation notes, and anticipation of the issuance of such bonds.
Double motion to introduce ordinance sixteen dash twelve. You have a second?
Second.
Local, please, Ms. Arianna.
Councilman Cookrow.
No.
Councilman Morton.
No.
Councilman Matthews.
Aye.
Councilman Sarno.
Abstained.
Councilman Disco.
No.
Councilman, Council President Petraselli.
No.
Okay, that ordinance has not passed.
Did you recap the votes?
Councilman Cookrow, no, Morton, no, Matthews, yes, Sarno abstained, Disco and Petraselli, no. Are you therefore now directing the term?
Can we do that at this point?
I don't know.
Is there an "I" to do that at this point?
Yes, we're on the capital, I, that's the.
Sixteen dash twelve.
Yes, we're on sixteen dash twelve, yes, one, um, that we prepare a capital ordinance to do this.
Yes.
I'll send you two more, Bob.
Do we need an official vote?
Um, I, no, they can tell me to do it, I'll do it.
Okay, I just wanna make sure.
Ordinance, or ordinance? Ordinance, ordinance, has to be done by ordinance, so you two read it.
Correct.
Thank you, Council. Okay, Ms. Arianna, please read ordinance sixteen dash thirteen by title only.
An ordinance to establish restricted parking zones pursuant to NJSA forty-eight four dash one nine seven four six and five three forty-six at Ullwad and the Borough of Garwood.
And motion to introduce ordinance sixteen dash thirteen.
I'll make a motion to introduce ordinance sixteen dash thirteen, Mayor.
Second.
Local, please, Ms. Arianna.
Councilman Cookrow.
Yes.
Councilman Morton.
Yes.
Councilman Matthews.
Aye.
Councilman Sarno.
Aye.
Councilman Disco.
Aye.
And Council President Petraselli.
Aye.
Thank you. Moving on, the council standing for new reports and other reports, please, Councilman Sarno.
Thank you, Mayor. Garwood Public Schools finished for the year on June seventeenth, and our surrounding communities wrap up this week on the twenty-fourth, which has since passed, with, with this, our kids will be more active during the day, and our police would like to remind drivers to be alert for their presence and their activities. The Garwood Recreation Program began Monday at the Sports and Athletic Field Complex from nine a.m. Tuesday, again, we would like to bring this to everyone's attention and ask that parents, the extra careful when, when dropping, dropping off, or picking up your kids in that area. Residents planning a vacation may have registered with the police department to have their property physically checked while they're away, and officer will do a walk-around check of your property as part of our patrol activities. Any resident who wishes to participate may go to the forms page of the police website, www.garwoodpd.org, and fill out the vacant house check form, and submit to the dispatch desk. Unfortunately, Garwood is not immune from the poisons that continue to plague our communities. Recently, the police department received a thank you note from the parents of a resident who was saved twice in a twenty-four hour period from a virulent virus by using the Narcom nasal agent. This victim lived to see another day, continues to fight the demons by a structured treatment program. Saves such as this would not be possible without the opiate counter, opiate counter acting agent Narcom. Chief Underwood, again, to thank the Greater Westfield Area Chamber of Promise for their donation, which would receive that, bless me, that donation has been used to purchase additional doses of Narcom agent, the department continues its proactive measures to battle legal drug use in Garwood, and.
Thank you, Councilman, any comments on the report?
Quick question, how, how much do those doses go for? Do you know how much they go for?
No. Do you know?
Yes, when they first came out, they were about twenty dollars per dose, uh, because of R and D and success, and only one company doing it, uh, putting these out, they have up to almost fifty dollars.
Fifty dollars per, per dose? And one dose is usually good enough for?
Two doses.
Two doses?
Any further comments from the council? I hear the non-public, Councilwoman Cookrow.
Thank you, Mayor. A lot of the meeting that we spent last week was talking about the Zika virus, where there are most prevalent ramifications, what to do to avoid an issue, et cetera. As we all know, and they stated it's mosquito season, and there have been a lot of calls about concerns, I never knew it, but Union County has a committee for tracking and a program for this, they said they actually do a great job on the bug front, and tracks, you know, and tracks and tests twice a week at the current time. The county works hand in hand through Westfield Board Health, as we do also, so they're totally on top of everything to pass along to us. Next week, they'll be rolling out a more intense Zika awareness program, they stressed over and over and over that they breed the most unlikely spots for anybody out there, toys, tires, and even small things like a bottle cap, of course, stagnant pool water is where they definitely manifest themselves, so water should be dumped and replaced. Also discussed was that it is rat season, good grief, rats and bugs, I wonder if the rats can eat the bugs, and alleviates some of the virus spreading all over the place. Residents had blood pressure screening, there were only five vaccinations recorded, which she said was on the light side, as per the norm, school records were inspected for vaccinations, and the school was a hundred percent compliant, they're also working diligently on a bicycle helmet program, they ran out of helmets and do not want to turn anyone down that may need them for their children. That's all for my report, Mayor.
Thank you, any comments? I do have one.
Okay.
About the municipal control.
Yeah.
I work with that division in the county, and they're willing, giving a time span of a lot of representation to a group such as the seniors, I know it's not a report now, but we can look into that.
Well, are you gonna look into that?
We could look.
Okay, well, well, we'll.
I'll initiate it, I'll contact you.
That'll be perfect.
Okay.
Okay, that'll be great.
Thank you.
And on the helmets, they didn't have a car seat, did they?
Said they ran out of them, she didn't want to keep giving, would have had somebody in line that was waiting for a helmet, and some kid would have gotten let down, so that's why they're looking, so who's ever getting them, they wouldn't have to turn anybody away, like the last kid in line.
Okay, thank you. Streets and Roads Ecology Council President Petraselli.
Thank you, Mayor. The Department of Public Works completed the following from June fifteenth through June twenty-eighth, the reoccurring activities were performed, the garbage maintenance and more. Additional activities that were performed, they performed daily street sweeping operations in various areas throughout the borough, posted areas were swept the day before for no parking, sweeping operations have been completed in the entire south side of the borough, installed the four turf field advisory signs at the sports and recreation complex, set up the tents and moved the tables at the sports and recreation complex for the annual senior picnic, set up tables and firehouse for the picnic due to inclement weather, weed all mulch beds and trim all shrubs, trees at the sports and recreation complex, Hartman Park and Edborough Hall, remove graffiti from the concrete abutment on the Center Street underpass, inspecting entire water system at the sports and recreation complex, irrigation building for leaks, remove bamboo and weeds from along the brook within the borough rightways in various locations, that's all for my report.
Thank you, Council President, any comments on the report?
The only comment I have, Lou, did you hear anything about any possible leaks at the, the recreation center? Who was, who was going to address it? Um, I know that early on, there was an issue with the sprinkler system when it was first turned on, um, that was months ago, that was back in April, uh, but they haven't had any other leaks since then, uh, and as far as the sprinkler system, that had only been turned on about maybe thirty to forty-five days ago, okay, so, I know they didn't find any leak though.
Okay, it's only watering the outfield, I guess, right?
Yeah, it's only watering the baseball field in the grass there, that's it, but we do have other water that's on the soccer field itself, and they are still working on getting that worked on, on the run. All right, that's my last question, Mayor.
Hey, gentlemen. Moving on, Fire Councilwoman Cookrow.
Thank you, Mayor. At a special meeting held on June thirteenth, two thousand and sixteen, with a quorum, President, the membership of Liberty Hall is company number one, five, Department five, Department accepted the membership application from Nicholas Dackowitz, or not, not the lady that's. It was, yeah, I know. Ignore the rest of that.
Oh, damn it, that's the night.
Yeah, he gave it to me, I got it.
You know, when he gave it to me, the day after, and I, I knew it was.
And I already got it.
Okay, ladies, thank you. Finance Councilwoman Disco.
Thank you, Mayor. The Finance Committee unanimously recommends that council adopt Resolution sixteen dash two-two-nine on tonight's consent agenda. We discussed potential salary increases for non-union employees at our last Finance Committee meeting. First, we agreed to allocate one point five percentage raises for the three non-union workers who are protected by state statute, as well as the chief of police. Additionally, we are proud that we work together to adjust the process specifically for non-union, non-protected workers. Our goal as legislators was to put more control in the hands of the administrators that best understand the day-to-day operations of their departments, however, as elected officials, we of course wanted to ensure that guidelines were provided, so in essence, we gave each department head overseeing non-union unprotected workers a pool of funds for them to allocate who would receive which amount, the resolution before you tonight reflects an even distribution for non-union, non-protected workers at one point five percent, which was recommended by the respective department heads in line with the employee evaluations they've conducted, and that's all for my report, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilman, any comments? Can we move on to Buildings and Grounds, Councilman Matthew?
Uh, no report, Mayor.
Thank you. Laws and Licenses, Councilman Martin?
Uh, yes, Mayor, today, there are three applications for raffle licenses, laws and license committee regulates the following, reduction of Resolution sixteen dash two-six-six, and the application of three on-premise fifty-fifty raffle licenses to join November sixteenth, two thousand and sixteen, March eighth, two thousand and seventeen, May thirty-first, two thousand and seventeen, at the Westward, four thirty-eight Grove Avenue, Garwood, New Jersey, by Union Catholic Regional High School. That is all for my report.
Thank you, sir. Any comments on the report? Non-council recreation, Councilman Martin? Garwood Senior Citizens Liaison, Councilwoman Cookrow.
Thank you, Mayor. The group wanted me to thank everyone that came to the rededication for the Garwood complex, they thought it was a great turnout. Ellen Steinberg from the Senior Citizen Council came and spoke to the group about the senior newsletter, she stated it has been delivered sporadically in the past, and she assured everyone that she was gonna bring them to each meeting. I handed out the June lunch menus from County Board Senior Group that Tony supplied to me, I am printing a menu for July to hand out the next meeting, as I said before, she's gonna send them to me monthly, so I can keep everyone in the loop as far as the choices for who goes. The senior picnic was endorsed this year due to the impending rain, as is the usual, it did not rain, it was a very nice turnout, even with it being endorsed, the mayor and Carol attended, there was a DJ for entertainment who brought his very cute children, they made nice conversation with everyone in the room. Free older Betty Jane Kowalski stopped by to speak to the group, and stayed for a bit, she mentioned the senior initiative, seniors in motion for the twenty-one municipalities, this is a paratransit system, to help seniors with transportation, I was very happy to see the county giving back some of those zillions of tax dollars to the townships whose pockets have been getting a year of it. I did introduce myself and said this is something very good for the group, we traded cards, I said I'd be very interested in more info to pass along, so that she will get back to me right away, I'm still waiting, I located some info myself while I waited, and did find a particular, so I'm happy to pass this along to Mayor Lombardo, I had to do you. Honestly, I'm west of the heads, that wonderful, I'm bad. It will be the decision of, of mayors of each town if they want to protect this, but it was a wonderful opportunity for the Garwood seniors. Colette, the senior director, brought leftover burgers and hot dogs to Borough Ball in the police department, some of the seniors wanted to take some leftovers home, Colette said due to health concerns with leftovers, they were not allowed to take it home, she did mention lawsuits in case someone got sick, but to me, although that sounds valid, it was a shame to see the food being dumped in the garbage, especially the food that would not spoil, like the salads. I spoke to the County Board Senior President, she said it was the correct procedure if the food was supplied by the county, I know that was not the case, as it was paid for by Garwood, she also said it depends on if grant money was used for the food, and that would be an issue as well, so I will call Tanya Moore to see what the case study is for leftovers by the Board Health, maybe Tina, you can let me know if it is even possible, this is funny, I'll make it myself later, if it is even possible to break down the grant money for food for an event, maybe futile, but throwing food out when there are people that are taking seems crazy to me. Okay, one of the group was very unhappy as grandma was cleaning the brook, but Mayor and I spoke about it, and they went there and cleaned it up over by Fifth Avenue, so I can only add, a resident also complained about a police van parked on Oak all the time when the owner has a very nice driveway, they also want to know what the ordinance was for this type of vehicle, I know that can be left to Chief Underhill, because it's the same truck that's parked there all the time.
And where was that location?
On Oak, on Oak over there down towards Ford, it's a, you see it every day, right?
I do.
Yeah, so I think it's something to do with the way that, I don't know.
Oak and third.
Oak and third, almost down, right between Ford and third. Um, right, someone else told me there is a missing street sign on the corner of West Edmerlin that I drive by, I did, and yes, it is in fact missing, I assume someone is working on this street sign for West Edmerlin. Finally, the group said they would love a new round table, the same ones that have been ordered in the past, they said Tina would know, it can no longer be patched together, they showed it to me, and I can confirm that blue is no longer holding, and is very, very, very broken, so can this be done in time?
We get one, please, one.
It's up against the wall, it's not sitting out there, it's against the wall, I expect it, it's like, I get another one, right there? Oh, David, second, it's showing me where it was.
It's always a missing space for the table that they have. Thank you.
Okay, that's all for my report, Mayor, thank you very much.
Thank you. Any comments on the report? Here we go, Library Mayor's Representative, Councilman President, President.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. So far, thirty-three children have signed up for the library's, uh, twenty-second annual summer reading club, our first summer reading event, the Mad Science Physics Olympics Assembly was attended by three hundred and twenty-five children. This past Wednesday at the library was our first Blacky Olympic Wednesdays, WOW, which tug-of-war and parachute games, our next WOW will be the straw javelin throw, and a paper airplane toss on Wednesday, July sixth, at two P M. The library will also be showing movies every other Wednesday at, at two, movies will include Zootopia on June twenty-ninth, Kung Fu Panda Three on July thirteenth, and Eddie the Eagle on July twenty-seventh. This Thursday, kids will be making coffee can splits at two P M, every Thursday, in July will be Lego Club, on July twelfth, at two P M, the library will present You Are Who You, this program will feature frogs, scorpions, snakes, and turtles, kids will Kids will learn how these animals find and catch their food and how they avoid becoming food for other animals. We are also participating in State Library and Chipotle Summer Reading Initiative. A good read deserves a good feed. Any child logging in at two hours of summer reading or signed up for summer reading and participating in summer reading activities will receive a coupon for one free Bill Journal Kids Meal. In addition, any child logging two hours of reading will also get to draw a prize from the library's prize box. Summer hours for the library will begin the week of Monday, June twenty-seventh. Weekday hours of library will remain unchanged. However, the library will be closed on Saturdays during July and August. Regular Saturday hours will begin again on Saturday, September tenth after Labor Day. That's all for my report.
Thank you, Council President. Any comments on the library report? School Board Liaison Councilman Sarno?
Thanks, Mayor. Lincoln Schools eighth grade graduation was held Friday, June seventeenth, and thirty-two Garwoodians closed the book on their junior high years and will disembark on the next chapter of their young careers at ALJ. It was a wonderful evening that I'm sure the graduates will remember, and I wish them the best of luck next year. The next meeting of the board is going on concurrently tonight at Lincoln School, and the following meeting will be Tuesday, August sixteenth at Lincoln Schools at thirty. That's all for my report.
Thank you, Councilman. Any comments on the School Board Liaison Report? School Board Liaison Councilman Tedesca?
Thank you, Mayor. I attended the last meeting of the Celebrations Committee on June fifteenth. Movie Under the Stars this year will be on Friday, September ninth at dusk with a rain date of the following day, September tenth. The movie will be Minions. Thank you to Spencer Savings Bank, the Greener Westfield Area Chamber of Commerce, and the Borough for sponsoring this event. That's all for my report, Mayor.
Thank you. Any comments? Hearing none. Union County Liaison Noise Advisory Board Representative, Councilman Matthew?
Thank you, Mayor. We had our third quarter meeting last night. Apparently, people have been noticing an uptick in basically air traffic noise in the area, particularly in Cranford. I don't know if anybody around here has been noticing that. I'm oblivious to it, so please let me know or let someone appear now. Most of us are not home during the day. What they expect, what our chairman thinks is, the planes are supposed to go to a navigation point before they make a turn to go west, and he thinks that they're not doing that anymore and that they're actually turning right around Cranford, which is near us. And there's been a marked increase in, in noise complaints. So I would encourage anyone to contact the Port Authority. You could go ahead and they could file a complaint. Apparently, the number of complaints, who's complaining, you know, if somebody's putting eight thousand complaints, they tend to ignore it. But if there's a number of complaints that are concentrated in the area and are from different people, that will cause them to go ahead and pursue it. So I do encourage people, if they are hearing this, to go ahead and encourage, to go ahead and file a noise complaint with the Port Authority. Encourage your neighbors to do so. That's all from my report.
Thank you, Councilor. Any comments on the report?
That's exciting, Councilman. For the air traffic control thing, I heard.
Yeah, it's kind of interesting. I learned that United represents about two-thirds of the flights out of Newark, which I did not know. There are less planes, but they tend to be better. And you know what I found out? It's all time, fuel, and money. And, you know, going ahead and turning a few minutes early can add huge amounts of money. So, you know, if they go ahead and can get away with that, and there are people bothered by it, then so be it. So we have to kind of, we have to guard that.
Thank you. Administrative Committee Councilwoman Tedesca?
No report, Mayor.
You, Historic Committee Councilwoman Tedesca?
Thank you, Mayor. As we had noted in the task, the Hartman sign has been missing for some time, and the Hartman relatives have requested that the borough replace it since the park is in honor of past councilman and borough volunteer, Mr. Harry E. Hartman. The task was placed on the Garwood Historical Committee, and through the funding of the Hartman family, the committee has obtained a gray replacement sign and set up this small ceremony, which will take place on Saturday through ninth at eleven A M. at Hartman Park to dedicate the sign being replaced. In attendance will be the Hartman relatives, dignitaries such as the mayor and council, the Board of Education, and the Garwood Historical Committee. And that's all for my report, Mayor.
Councilwoman, it's like July.
July, too. Okay. I said you?
Any comments on the report? Thank you very much. Okay, we'll move on to Officers' Report.
Chief of Police Bruce Underhill, monthly report for May twenty-sixteen.
You have a motion to accept the Officer's Report.
So, who, Mayor?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Do you have public comments? Is anyone in the audience who wishes to address the Mayor and Council? Please step to the microphone, state your full name and address. Please leave your conversation to three minutes.
Mark Lazaro, five-eleven, Mardle. I just had a question in regards to the ordinance sixteen twelve that you guys just voted on, and I just really directed Councilman Matthew in terms of, I just wanted to know what your rationale for why you decided to vote in favor of that particular ordinance? If that was something that, you know, was agreed upon by the fact that if it was actually decided that you didn't go forward with that ordinance, that you would have been paying cash and not have to pay out interest? So I was just wondering if you could give us some justification for why you voted for that? If it was clearly an idea to actually pay for that particular ordinance with cash in a different line item? So that's basically my question.
Because these are my opponents and.
I am very sorry. It's a question.
Okay, all right. Well, Mark, what I'm going to do is, I don't want to subject people here to the campaign. Let's keep the campaign outside the room. And excuse me, sir, I'm not, I'm not so close.
Good gentleman.
All right, I'll keep, if we can just keep the campaign outside the room. If you're truly interested in my rationale, I'll talk to you after the meeting.
I don't see why that the rationale actually has anything to do with the campaign. You made a vote. Has everything to do with deciding on how you're going to make a decision. I think everyone deserves to know why you decided to vote, but if you decide that that's, you know, obviously can't force the answer, but it's just.
As the Councilman, he doesn't care to answer, and I think that's another point.
Fair enough. Thank you.
Anyone else? Yes. Where's your binder?
My who?
Your binder.
Okay. Oh, was I bringing it up?
No.
I'm okay. But anyway, good evening, Mayor LaMardo, ladies and gentlemen of the Council, Bruce Patterson, two-twenty-five Willow Avenue. And actually, I do remember to Mr. Lazaro's question, I'm not going to give the answer, but actually, Councilman Matthew actually did answer back whenever it was brought up the first time, when I was talking about there possibly was alternatives. And he did give, he did give his answer.
Okay.
There is an answer out there.
I think that's, there's a Councilman Matthew who discussed that.
Sure, okay.
That's a good point. If I could just say, Mr. Lazaro wasn't at that meeting, but thank you, Bruce.
Okay, you meant the answer.
Mr. Patterson?
Oh, I, yes, I, I did ask.
I think we should be throwing bars from the dice here.
I, I did ask for a possible resolution about doing a twenty percent grant match or twenty-five percent.
Twenty percent?
Okay, I hope you're taking it under consideration. And then tonight was actually going to be the first reading of the redevelopment plan. Attorney Renaud actually gave the explanation, which I understood perfectly. But I did write a letter in, being proactive towards this redevelopment plan that's, that's coming up for a vote sooner or later, and a public meeting. But anyway, I wanted to at least get this idea out there to the council for them, for their consideration. And it's that the council is actually, the council responds to the residents because they're elected officers. The Planning Board doesn't because they're appointed, so therefore, the public meetings that we had over there were more informational. And if anybody really did express concerns, the Planning Board did not have to answer to those concerns, and we actually did see that. I mean, you know, I had a couple of concerns. I did, it fell on deaf ears. I had a couple of suggestions that fell on deaf ears. They do not have to respond to the public. But as elected officials, yes, you guys have to. So I wrote this letter talking about, you know, possibly giving the voice to the people by pushing for vote for this redevelopment plan until after the November election. I would assume you all read my letter here, hopefully. If you haven't, it's in your pocket. You can read it. So I mean, I'm just, I'm just giving you food for thought whenever this comes up, but I'm not, I won't let it drop because it's the people's voice. And I would assume all the elected officials do cherish our voice out here as we express our concerns, our support, you know, whatever we say. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing that this council will want the consent agenda? You have a motion to adopt the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion to adopt the consent agenda.
The sixteen dash two-two-five, wasn't that being removed?
Oh, yeah. Did you remove that?
And then also, I mean, did you want to move two-two-nine?
Okay.
Yes.
Then I will state that, can I have a motion?
I'm sorry.
It's all right.
The only thing I want to break is the ordinance that was brought in late.
We can have that under.
That's going to come after that.
Yeah.
Just want to make a point.
Okay, thank you. Okay, can I have a motion for the amended consent agenda?
So, Mayor, just to clarify, this is the consent agenda with sixteen, two-twenty-five, and sixteen.
Two-two-nine?
Two-two-nine.
Two-twenty-nine.
Okay.
As amended.
As amended, thank you.
Augmented by motion that we accept the consent agenda as amended.
Thank you. Roll call, please, Senator.
Second.
Councilwoman Kuguro?
Yes.
Councilman Morton?
Yes.
Councilman Matthew?
Aye.
Councilman Sarno?
Aye.
Councilwoman Tedesca?
Aye.
Council President, pick us up.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, so sixteen twenty-five is deleted completely because we're not doing that.
That's correct.
Now we.
Going.
Mayor, you got sixteen two-twenty-nine.
And a motion to adopt two-two-nine, please?
I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution sixteen dash two-two-nine, Mayor.
Thank you. Roll call, please, Senator.
Councilwoman Kuguro?
No.
Councilman Morton?
Yes.
Councilman Matthew?
Aye.
Councilman Sarno?
Aye.
Councilman Tedesca?
Aye.
And Council President, pick us up.
Aye.
Okay, now we'll move on to Resolutions related on the consent agenda. Resolution number sixteen dash two-thirty?
Okay, I don't have to read it because I made my statement, but you got my explanation as to why it isn't on the original agenda.
Okay, we have a motion to accept sixteen dash two-thirty.
Set.
Any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please, Senator.
Councilwoman Kuguro?
No.
Councilman Morton?
Yes.
Councilman Matthew?
Aye.
Councilman Sarno?
Aye.
Councilman Tedesca?
Aye.
And Council President, pick us up.
Aye.
Number nine, do I have a motion for Resolution sixteen dash two-thirty-one?
Just by way of explanation, I understand this is the licensees that didn't make their paperwork in time to be on the original list on a consent, consent agenda.
Thank you, Senator. Can you have to have a motion?
I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution sixteen dash two-thirty-one, Mayor.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call, please, Senator.
Councilwoman Kuguro?
Yes.
Councilman Morton?
Yes.
Councilman Matthew?
Aye.
Councilman Sarno?
Aye.
Councilman Tedesca?
Aye.
Council President, pick us up.
Aye.
Okay, now we have Resolution sixteen two-thirty-two. I don't want to read it whole because it's not, it's long. A resolution in support of Senate Bill S two-two-five-four and Assembly Bill A three-eight-two-one, which confirms the legislative intent of the Fair Housing Act, where the Royal Guard supports the provision of affordable housing in a reasonable, rational, and achievable, achievable way consistent with economic realities and sound planning. And whereas pursuant to the March twenty-fifteen New Jersey Supreme Court order which transferred oversight of the Fair Housing Act to the courts, hundreds of municipalities filed declaratory judgment actions to voluntary comply with their state imposed affordable housing requirements. And whereas recently, the Ocean County Superior Court included a distant gap period analysis retroactively over an additional sixteen-year period, separate and apart from the normal ten-year present and prospective need. And whereas the Fair Housing Act, an existing case law, requires that present and prospective fair share of the housing need in a given, shall be computed for a ten-year period, NJS eight fifty-two, twenty-seven B, real sentence C, and whereas the gap issue arises and poses an ability to properly third-round regulation from nineteen ninety-nine to the present to make any final determination as to state and regional housing need, as well as constant litigation by certain groups. And whereas any retroactive gap obligation could have significant unfunded impact on municipalities, may double count hem households under both present and prospective needs and will likely result in forced municipalities and their property tax threat to subsidize development. And whereas Senate Bills S two-two-five-four sponsored by Senators Greenstein and Bateman, and Assembly Bill A three-eight-two-one sponsored by Assembly Act, Deangelo and Benson, reaffirm the legislative intent of the Fair Housing Act so to preclude significant unfair impacts and instead progress toward a more rational statewide housing policy, including reasonable and achievable obligations for municipalities, facility miserable or concomitant spending provision of affordable housing amongst others. Now therefore be resolved on this twenty-eighth day of June, twenty sixteen by the Royal Guard. In the County Union Act, one, Garwood Borough strongly urges New Jersey legislators to reaffirm the legislative intent of the Fair Housing Act immediately and clarify that affordable housing need is the sum of present and prospective need for a ten-year period. Two, Garwood Borough supports Senate Bill and Assembly Bill. Three, copies of this resolution shall be distributed to the governor, leading municipalities, and the representatives. Councilman?
I have a motion for Resolution sixteen two-thirty-two?
I'll make a motion to.
Roll call, please, Senator.
Councilwoman Kuguro?
Yes.
Councilman Morton?
Yes.
Councilman Matthew?
Aye.
Councilman Sarno?
Aye.
Councilman Tedesca?
Aye.
Council President, pick us up.
Aye.
Thank you, Council. Payman McQuillan's?
Be resolved in the following things as approved, being the same whatsoever, looking to be properly signed and verified. And payment of payrolls as listed in the term of the contract.
You have a motion to adopt Payman McQuillan's resolution?
So, Mayor.
Second.
Roll call, please, Senator.
Councilwoman Kuguro?
Yes.
Councilman Morton?
Yes.
Councilman Matthew?
Aye.
Councilman Sarno?
Aye.
Councilman Tedesca?
Aye.
Council President, pick us up.
Aye.
Regular meeting of the mayor-council will be held on Tuesday, July twelfth, twenty sixteen, in council chambers at seven fifteen P M. Workshop will start at seven P M. There will be a public hearing in council chambers on order number sixteen dash twelve at sixteen dash thirteen, Tuesday, July twelfth. I stand corrected. On Tuesday, July twelfth, twenty sixteen, at seven fifteen P M, we're soon there. You have a motion to the chair?
So.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.